This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, it is 6:00 PM, Thursday, March the 24th, 2022. A regular meeting of the Rome City Council will begin at 7:00 PM. We're going into executive session at 6:00 PM. And y'all guys are willing to hang on, but we will be back live at 7:00 PM. And we're going to, we have a forum here. And we are, will be discussing section 551.071, consultation with an attorney, section 551.072, deliberation regarding real property, section 551.074, personnel, section 551.087. So we will now cut you off the line and we're going back into our back room for executive session. Thank you for listening in.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, I've got everything going the right way, I think. We are calling to order the Rome City Council meeting, Thursday, March the 24th. We finished the executive session. We have nothing to follow through on that. Regular session begins now. And we're going to, we have a forum here. And we have, the first thing we have is our invocation and our pledge and all that good stuff.
Please bow your head. Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you for loving us from your boundless and gracious nature. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities, to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council. I am asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, akin thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Rome. It is in your most blessed name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We are moving on to announcements from the mayor and council members. Okay, council members, who has something to offer?
Okay, Michelle. So we have this dated January 31st, 2022. It has the bond, all the, all bond payments and our interest, outstanding interest. And it says 3.568 for the principal, 1.400 for the interest. So total 4.9. Just wanted to let everybody know.
Okay, anyone else have an announcement? Yes, Ashley.
Okay, a couple of them is, at the last council meeting, I asked about our trucks. That, how many trucks that we had? And I was told that we had three. And we honestly, I was not given an honest answer, we have four. And our newest truck is the 2018 with only 13,000 miles. So that one was posted. So that is the first one. The second, the second announcement I would like to say is thank you to Divas for posting, to Giant Burger, to Mason for giving the support. Thank you. He is amazing. So if everyone can go out and show support to Mason and to our local businesses. So go ahead.
Just so we're clear, Sergeant Aaron Solter and Officer Rachel Bernard spearheaded that.
Okay, wonderful. But if everyone can go and show your thanks to Giant Burger and Mason would greatly appreciate it because Mason does need your support. He has short staff right now, so I spoke to him today. So please go out and support him and our other local businesses in town.
Anybody else have anything? No, okay, I'm going to move to the mayor announcements. But my first little note was let's all thank Mason and Giant Burger. Chiefs guys bought it to the surface. He is always, and I'm not sure how long always he is, but for quite some time, he cannot do enough for our city. If we had an event, you know, somebody might say, okay, we could use three dozen hot dogs. Oh, no, you need 200 dozen. Or, and yeah, you need bread to put them on, you know, and what about your mustard? You know, I mean, he was just always so open and always so, so go by, give him your business and tell him that, you know, the city of Rome appreciates the man. April the 4th, which is a Monday coming up sooner than we think, there is a planning and zoning commission meeting. Cynthia, does that start at 6?
Is it 6:30?
Anyhow, watch the Rome webpage for the time on the thing. And then, as you know, we have different trash things than we've had a year or two ago. April the 5th is a Tuesday. There is monthly bulk trash pickup. Now, basically Cynthia, aren't we to have more or less put the bulk, group it together if we can, put it in a container? We don't have to contain, okay. And when we get to the quarterly hazardous pickup, you have to call and there's more information on the city website to make an appointment for them to pick up your hazardous waste. And they ask that it be kind of put in something.
Now, that one, if you have not used, I have used that. It is very beneficial. So if you want to clean out your shed and all of your unused paint, put it on your front porch, they will pick it up. So that one is really good that we offer, so.
And that is going to be April the 12th is when the hazardous waste pickup comes. April the 7th is the last day to register to vote. So if you guys have not registered, make sure and do it by April 7th, if not on 1st April 7th. And then you're registering to vote and the first day of early voting is April the 25th. And we have several people here that are running for offices. And I ask that each one of them read the code of fair campaign practices and follow it. There is really, you know, it's kind of be kind to your neighbor, basically is what it says, but it goes into detail with seven paragraphs. So if you don't have a copy of that, you can pull it up. Anybody else needs to say or announce anything? Okay, we're going to the consent agenda. We have. I'm sorry, you know, I'm, what Elaine is telling me, I thought y'all were ready to say something. And you are, and then we'll go to the consent agenda.
Okay, the first one we have is a submittal from Lisa Ann Wilson. It says, after reviewing the agenda packet, I noticed that the revised speed limit for 3433 is insufficient. Becoming traffic because of reunion, Chisholm, and three Northwest schools in a close neighboring city who all use the road continually is not sufficient to help the congestion. Is a reduction of five miles going to make a difference? What was the cost of this study with no beneficial outcome? The facility meeting held on March 19th, 2022 has had a lot of citizens speak and present many good ideas. Much like the original town hall meeting called by the mayor, which also had wonderful suggestions, I urge the council to take an in-depth look at the citizens' input regarding facilities and proceed frugally and heed the input and do not take lightly the suggestions. We have wonderful historical buildings in place. We may utilize what we have, dance with the ones that brung us, before asking the citizens to approve an expensive bond. Let us move forward frugally. As outlined in our comprehensive plan, this could start, this could be a start to the historical downtown Rome. Upcoming election. Yes, election time is upon us and early voting begins April 25th through May 3rd, 2022. Please see the city website page for times, dates, and locations. Please get out and vote, every vote counts. A change and a new perspective is warranted. Have a great day. Lisa Ann Wilson, 240 West First Street. And next we have Patricia Mitchell.
My name is Patricia Mitchell. Council approved the purchase of three new vehicles during the March 10th council meeting at a cost of $136,000. If you add any interest, it's about $163,000. City Administrator Cynthia Northrup said that the newest vehicle is a 2013 Chevrolet. Since then, we've learned that the newest vehicle is actually a 2018 model Chevrolet. These vehicles are utilized mostly within Rome's four point square mile area. Properly maintained, these vehicles are durable and can be driven a very long time. The body styles of both the Dodge Ram and the Chevy Silverado models have changed very little through the years. The expensive purchase of three new vehicles does not appear to be that of true necessity. I would ask that council reconsider this expensive purchase at this time. Pertaining to the sewage rate increase, it was indicated that rates, rates had not been increased since 1999. Sewage rates were in fact increased in 2013 as referenced by Council minutes July 11th, 2013. Rome's rate, $196.28, that's the minimal commercial rate for one inch standard, is not competitive or comparable to other cities. Boyd's minimum rate, commercial rate, is $36 monthly. Newark's is $30 monthly. This is another area that I would ask for council reconsideration because of the businesses. If they're even a prospective business, if it's, if it's going to consider Rome, we may not be in the ballpark when they go to considering their expenses and the expense to do business in the city of Rome. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Mitchell. Ann?
Excuse me, I believe that we need, we have the obligation to correct anything that was misspoken on that. Yes, I believe that is on our agenda. If you could look at the top of the agenda, it says, let me make sure I quote it correctly.
Well, it says that you can make a statement of fact, Sam.
Right, that's all I'm wanting to do. All I'm wanting to do is make a statement of fact. The, the funds for the trucks were not, it was not passed in March of this year. That was passed far previously. It was merely just a reallocation of how those funds were used. The second is, I believe Cynthia was asked what the latest truck was that is going to be replaced, and that was the 13 model, not the 18, that was not.
Correct, I was only discussing the three trade-ins that were for Jermaine to the agenda topic, which were the three that were going to be traded in.
Correct, so.
Why, you're not supposed to bring it up, so I listened to the minutes as well.
Go ahead, go ahead Shayna.
Okay Shayna.
Next we have Donna DeGarmo.
My name is Donna DeGarmo. I live at 104 Kensington and that's it. And I was gonna, and my main object today is, at one time we had flyers put out without water bills. And I know that you are trying to not do that anymore because of cost thing. But is there any way that we can let the, let it be known that we're going to have our garden this year? All of our fruits and vegetables are there to help anybody or anybody. They don't have to pay for them if somebody doesn't have the money. We would just like to be able to get that word out. So if there's something you can help me with, please do. United Roman United Methodist. And we do, we sit out there on Saturdays and if anybody walks by, we, we obviously give them. But then now, now here's where my anger comes in. So I'll try to be fast. If these trucks in there were already voted on to be paid for previously, do you have the right to, does council have the right to say, oh no, we don't want to do that anymore? Or can we just quit beating a dead horse? Same with the water. I don't think that, I think that what I've learned so far, we need that money for our pipes and things like that. So once again, can we just quit beating a dead horse? We will never prosper if we can't stop this. I mean, and I went out for the meeting with who's running for council, that's another thing. Are council members required to come to meetings? I don't know. I mean, if I can sit home, maybe I'll run for council. But at least one of them, I mean, I, now I think each one has been to one. And I could be totally wrong about that. You know, and, and once again, I try to, and I'm knocking on doors now. I am knocking on doors from Crown Point. And I, hopefully I'll get a group that comes up here because I just don't understand this. I mean, and I know we have free speech, obviously. We have to let everybody get up and talk. But in a way, I think it should be centered because we'll never prosper unless we can stop with the past. Never. And I probably should shut up now. I've said more than my fair share. I'll get over and be mad and I'm sitting down.
Next we have Christie King.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Christie King. I live at 207 Cheyenne Trail North. I've been a resident of Rome for the past 18 years. I think that what you do is a service. And I really am coming to the podium tonight to say thank you. I appreciate the time and the dedication that it takes to do the job that you have been called to serve in. I also want to implore to the council that as you make the decisions, that you reflect on the invocation that was given at the beginning of this meeting and that you, as you are speaking and deciding things, that you are really considering how you're representing and how you are models and leaders for the city of Rome. If we are going to fuss about sewage and trucks and all of those things, then it will do no good if we have 30 cents or whatever the rate is on our sewage tax. People are not going to want to move here when they hear all of this. It is embarrassing. So I ask and I implore that the council, please, continue to maintain yourselves in a professional manner to stay focused on the vision and the goals and the good that you can do. Thank you.
And that's the end of public comment.
Okay, we haven't missed anybody in the audience. So now they'll let me go on to the consent agenda. We have the minutes of the city council regular session dated March the 10th, 22. We have the minutes of the special city council meeting dated March the 19th. And kudos to Shayna for getting these done so timely. Do we have anybody that wants to approve these or any questions?
I motion to approve.
I hear a second, and Michelle is seconding. All in favor? Then we're going to move down to the regular agenda, own business, discussion and necessary action regarding ordinance to lower speed limit on Farm Road 3433. For those that may not know what that is, that is the hazardous road between Rome and Newark. So Cynthia, you're showing is action.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, Mayor and council members, you directed staff to work with TechDOT to see what we could do to lower the speed limits on FM 3433 within the city of Rome. So we, one of the procedures for doing that is conducting a speed study, which was done. That information was sent to TechDOT. They evaluated it. It did warrant, there are, I'm certainly not an engineer, but there are certain warrants that have to be met, certain criteria that have to be met to lower speed limits. And they sent it down, TechDOT, Wise County Area Office sent it down to the Texas Transportation Commission, and they reviewed the information and they approved that because it met the warrants for a five mile an hour reduction. Staff did talk to them about the growth that's going on out there, rolling V, construction that was ongoing and the schools that are along FM 3433. So they're, they were aware of all of that. So what you have before you, the next step, is that we have to present them with an ordinance from the council. So you have an ordinance before you to lower that speed limit. Once, if, if you take that action, we will forward it to TechDOT and they will give us the next steps, which will be changing out the speed limit signs.
Will we be responsible for changing them out if TechDOT do that?
I believe TechDOT does that.
Elaine?
I know that we had asked them to consider 45, namely because of the schools and, and the growth. And so we didn't evidently, their study didn't meet that criteria. So once the houses are built, people get, begin to move in there, and then of course the school enrollment numbers are going to increase along with those houses as people move in there. Will they take the same study information and reconsider? Or how, how would that work once those demographics change?
Well, we, we could always go back and, but they wouldn't use that same study. They would do another study. And essentially, I mean, there's warrants and criteria that has to be met, but when they are looking at these speed studies, they, there's a plus or minus percentage that you can set it at. And I mean, they're literally evaluating how fast the traffic is actually going, how fast the drivers are actually driving. It seems counterintuitive, but that's what they're looking at. So, and then, and they set it at the 85th percentile of, of what the drivers are actually driving out there. So as it gets busier and as more people move out there and it does become more congested, this was never meant to, you know, reduce congestion. It's more of a safety thing. But then, you know, traffic will slow down and then you take, do a speed study and then they would look at those actual speeds.
Well, you know, two of us have been pretty vocal about trying to get that reduced over there. And so one of the things that I'm, I'm doing, since there's no minimum posting as far as the speed limit, I just drive 45, so if they're behind me, then, then I have changed the speed limit.
So you're the car they're complaining about.
That would, I would be that person. So I just wanted, I just wanted folks to know that we actually had requested a slower speed limit for the safety of the children. A lot of the kids were coming across the street, you know, at, at drop off and pickup time. And that can be pretty dangerous over there with all of the people trying to get to work and everything. And so at 55 miles an hour was not the choice of this city council. It was, it was what TechDOT said that we had to do.
So y'all can remember what Elaine does. There's no reason you can't copy it, you know, and see if we can quote, take matters in our own hands.
We only have jurisdiction within the city of Rome, so they only looked at our city limits, which goes basically from the southbound Service Road of 287 South on 3433 by Chisholm.
Right by the school?
Yeah.
I believe the city limit sign is just right at that street.
Can I travel that road three or four times a week?
I'm kind of with you, Donna. Four is the city limit time?
I spoke with Michelle Decredico. Her driveway is in Rome, the street is in Newark. Okay?
Well, and.
So the street itself is Newark.
Okay.
So you have to go to Newark to get to Elaine's house.
Right, okay. Well, years ago, we were doing Christmas decoration search. So I said, hey, I'll take Chisholm. The reason I said that, it was small and it wouldn't take long. So I come back and turned my valve in and I was told that every house I looked, looked at was actually in New York. So I had to go back and do it all over again, you know, as far. But like Sam says, that road divides us, I'm the thing.
So maybe, I know I'm not supposed to speak in, but is rolling V in city of Rome?
No.
Oh, no?
Okay, anybody else?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance based on TechDOT's recommendation.
Elaine seconded, Josh made the, or does everyone in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so we're going to move on then to the regular agenda and new items. Discussion and update regarding OpenGov. City Administrator has that, and Ashley.
Well, Mayor, council member Ashley Majors asked for this on the agenda last two weeks ago. And I gave an update for you guys and I reminded you guys that we onboarded STW in, well, 2019, actually, 2020, 2019. And we went from QuickBooks to STW. OpenGov was bought out, I mean, STW was bought out by OpenGov. And I guess that was in 2019. It's a cloud-based program. And so looking at their business model in 2021, they advised us that they would no longer be servicing STW. And so we brought the proposal to you to move to upgrade to the cloud. And we went over all of this. We talked about it in July, we talked about it in August, and I've included that. Some information in my weekly reports. The onboarding process is anywhere from nine to 12 months. We're, not that you all need reminding, but we're a little bit unique. It's not normal to have 17 bank accounts. And so we are trying to go to consolidated cash. And that's going to be a big benefit to us. So that's what we're in process of doing. The ARPA funds came out and this was an eligible expense. As you know, we were, we received $457,000 in ARPA funds. And the first tranche came out, they call them tranches, in approximately August, and that was 212,000. out, they call them tranches, in approximately August, and that was 228. In July, you guys pretty much authorized the expenditure of those funds. So the first tranche was going to include OpenGov, the AV that live streams so people can attend the meetings at home, and police and fire items, radios and pagers, and, and the second tranche that we will receive in August of 2022, this year, will, is all dedicated towards water, wastewater. We do have, apparently, I've asked you what your questions are, Councilmember Majors, but we do have our representative here, Andrew Stout. So if there's other questions that I haven't answered, he's available for any questions.
Before we get started, I'd like to know, what are your questions?
Okay, on the sheet that you gave us, it said the staff asked to begin the onboarding process focusing on the chart of accounts, mapping to begin just consolidated cash, which I guess that is the 17 bank accounts that you just answered. Consolidated cash as soon as feasible. OpenGov said it would try to begin in the fourth quarter of 2021, but it'd more realistically be sometime in the first quarter of 2022, which we're ending that right now. So when will that, it's not going to take place. So it didn't take place, I mean, is it, so can you explain that?
I'm not sure what the question is, but I mean, we have started conversations with OpenGov. When you are upgrading to a, when you're upgrading, I mean, there's a lot, that's, this is why it takes nine to 12 months. And if you remember, I've told you guys several times that, and this is something that OpenGov shared with us, that, you know, there's many cities that will hire extra staff to, for the project management, because it's a big undertaking to lift and shift, is what they call it, but to go from an on-premise system to the cloud-based system. It's a big undertaking to go from, you know, 17 bank accounts and two funds to consolidated cash. There's a lot of mapping that happens on the back end with the chart of accounts, redoing the entire chart of accounts. So that takes some time. So they've been honest with us with, throughout this whole thing, and it just takes them out of time. So, and I've, I've communicated what they've said to me, which is nine to 12 months. And so, you know, I'm hopeful. I mean, obviously, I'd like it done yesterday.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
It seems like it's kind of a simpler question. It merely says that they would begin fourth quarter 2021, but more realistically, first quarter 2022, and that's just begin?
Right.
Okay, have they begun?
Yes.
Okay, then they have.
Yes.
They met that, they met that specification?
Yes, we started...
Okay, I just...
But why haven't, which I've been asking, why do we have 17 bank accounts? I've asked that question over and over again. Why haven't you tried to consolidate the 17 bank accounts?
Well, again, you cannot, we did have 27. We closed, when I got here, we had about 27, and so we closed about 10. But the way the system is mapped right now, you can't, I mean, we can't, we wanted to go to consolidated cash before this lift and shift, but that's not possible. And so we have to wait to go to the cloud-based program. So, I mean, we can ask Andrew that question. I would love that to happen, but it's just a process. It doesn't happen overnight. I mean, these are...
Which I, I mean, I know, some, one city's done it in three months, other cities done it in 12, nine to 12 months. I understand.
Andrew, can you speak to that? A city that's done it in three months?
It's Northlake that's done it in three months.
Happy to, and can y'all hear me all right?
Yes.
Great, thanks. I apologize, I can't be there in person. My wife is out of town, so I'm solo dad this week. Next council meeting, happy to join in person. So Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Happy to address, first off, with the consolidated cash issue, the on-premise STW system, it's very hard to change account codes. So Cynthia and team would actually have to pay us to do it, in which case it really wouldn't make a lot of sense to pay us to do that for her, and then pay us again to then deploy OpenGov Cloud financials. So how we're doing this is doing it all in one, one go together, and a lot of that is laying out the chart of accounts and then building the system. So that's, this is a majority of the work here, which takes the longest part of the deployment. And to address the town of Northlake who did deploy, and a little bit longer, in three months, they're about four to five months, they went fully live on the OpenGov Cloud platform. They also had several OpenGov products already. So in which case, they had 30 to 40% of the system already deployed, and all we were moving were some of their financial modules to the cloud. And from there, they also have additional staff members, which made it easier. So every one of these systems, because they are on-premise, are very different, very different. Some are even on different versions, which means then they operate differently. So there's really no one size fits all to it. It's just the average timeframe that we see for total deployment is nine to 12 months.
So, so Andrew, since we still have 17 accounts, how long do you think to us to consolidate our cash down to one account, how long do you think it's going to take us?
That, that's a great question. I am not 100% sure on exactly how long it's going to take. I will tell you, what's more important is that, is that we make sure that everything is GAAP compliant and GAAT compliant, because currently, the chart of accounts as it sits today is not compliant to general accounting best practices. So we want to make sure that we do this correctly, so that in the future, this is something that's scalable for the city of Rome, and then this isn't a situation again. Because that's, frankly, that's exactly why there are 17 accounts, because the, we see this all across Texas. There's, there was an accountant that was taught a certain way of doing things, and that's how they did it. And it may not be GAAP compliant, which is the general, general way of doing accounting. And, and that's what causes a lot of difficulty in a lot of these deployments. So I can't give you an exact timeframe. I can tell you that we're working with staff now to ensure that everything is laid out correctly and done correctly, because once we solidify the chart of account structure, it makes deploying the software a lot more streamlined from that standpoint.
Anyone else have any questions? Cynthia will be our go-to person if you do, I'm the thing. And then we'll move on now to item I.
You, Andrew.
Thank you for all of your help.
Item I is discussion and any action regarding open burning. And Chief Fitch, I think, is out for something else's burning. So Cynthia, can you take that?
Yes. So he has been working on this, and he gave the updates to Carvin. And Carvin, you have the ordinance before you put it in ordinance form, so this will update chapter five. And if you have any questions, I mean, I'll try to answer them. I'm not the fire expert, but, you know, the, the big, the big change here is now that we are, when you have open burning in a city with smaller lots, it presents a safety hazard. And so especially now that we have monthly bulk trash pickup, we want to discourage open burning of trash. And so there will be, you can read in there, there's limited opportunities, but by and large, we're asking that people avoid that open burning.
I think the only question when I read this, and this is what I had last time when he was here, was like, which I see, this says no burning of waste or garbage, but it was, which I see here, one of the neighbors is burning of like their brush and like their firewood, like trees, and here in the neighborhood. So I didn't see it kind of specify that.
Well, that's in the brush? Yeah.
Excuse me, land clearing operations, fires involving the burning of brush trees and stumps from land clearing operations under Texas Commission on Environmental Quality rules 111.201 through 111.221.
I don't know if that would just be for, would that cover for like a house?
Yeah.
I just didn't know if that would cover somebody's like, just limbs off their tree.
Well, I actually don't know. 111.201 through 221.
I just didn't know if that would just, somebody's small, like, just their tree or just a few stomps.
Well, yes, I mean, first of all, we, we would still be, if there's, if there, if Wise County has a burn ban, then there's still a burn ban, so let's be clear about that.
Correct.
But that is exactly what we are, one of the things that Chief wanted to address.
So... Right, but I did, that's one of the issues that they've come out on a call for, that is in the, here in Old Town, that was somebody was burning their, they cut down a tree, and they were burning the tree in their yard. So I just want to make sure that was in here. So I didn't know if the land clearing was just a...
I think what Chief was referring to in the previous meeting was, yes, that's still considered land clearing. Now, if you're doing it in a 50-gallon barrel, that's not going to be allowed. But if you're using an approved fire container, like a fire pit or something like that, that is approved. But they can't just be burning in a pile in the yard or 50-gallon container. It's got to be an approved container.
They, so for instance, that's what I was like, it was in their front yard. That's what I should make sure in the future, like it wasn't cut, like they didn't, they cut it up into logs and then like their tree, like the brush, and then they caught that on fire. So I just want to make sure that...
That would be a bonfire, and that would be not possible.
Okay. Well, and if you read, I mean, 3A, I mean, yeah, so 3A, I think, excuse me, addresses that, but fires involving the burning, and it does say land clearing operations. So, I mean, when you're cutting a tree down, that's a land clearing operation. So fires involving the burning of brush trees and stumps from land clearing operations under Texas Commissioner on Environmental Quality rules 111.201-111, 221 may be permissible if all conditions of the rules can be met, along with prior written notification and permit fees, if that applicable. So, I mean, there's going to be conditions.
Conditions, okay.
That's what he, that's what he said, and that's what this says.
Yeah, just also in the section B, there's the exceptions. So if you're trying to figure out, there's exceptions for a single family about recreational and all that stuff. So there's, so that's where, you know, the date, we can differentiate the difference between open burning and then some that's in contained.
Okay. That was my concern, because it was, for instance, a neighbor, and I've...
That's open, yeah, that's open burning, it's open pit.
Right, and they were out in their front yard with a water hose, and it was smoke, like I could see, and so I just don't want to see another, because the houses are so close, and flames, so.
And they still do have an ordinance about nuisances too, and so if there's somebody is doing it properly, but it still causes nuisance, that can also be, you know, distinguished.
Okay, thank you.
I don't want to be thick-headed, but let me ask, what Ashley's talking about, then they can do it, but they do need a permit. Okay, but if somebody has cleared land and got stuff to burn, do they need a permit? Okay, just...
This is telling me, yes.
Okay.
The way I read this, yes.
Okay.
But if they meet certain rules, I mean, there's, there's rules that have to be met.
Okay.
Yeah, but Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, it says 300 feet from any structure, you know, there's a lot of rules that you have to abide by.
So 300...
Y'all have the time, I found a webpage, I could read them all to you.
I do too.
Let's move on.
And again, there's difference between commercial and residential too, so it's separated.
Very happy that Fitch brought this to us, so I wish she was here tonight.
Okay, and we'll move on to item J.
Actually, Mayor, I would make a motion to approve that ordinance.
And I second it.
Are we ready to look at it? Okay. Okay, everybody in favor? Anyone objection? Ordinance is approved, and it should make our city a safer place. And we're going on now to item J. Shayna, this shows you discussion and any necessary action, amending ordinance 2020-03 for our general election.
I'll, I'll take it. So you guys have already called the election, and you did that several weeks ago, and what we had was a situation where we hadn't gotten the information from the county on the days and times and locations specifically. And so this is just, and they were conducting the, you know, they will be conducting this election for the city of Rome, and they were, of course, conducting the primary, so they were pretty busy. But they've gotten us that information, and so this amends that ordinance. And those, do you want me to read them?
Just the general location of all early voting, of what it has been in the past on Election Day, for the precincts here in Rome, you will go to Boyd. Just, and to be safe, you can kind of go to Boyd for all of it. They have early and the Election Day. So one of these days, we'll get it all back at Rome, which certainly would help our citizens.
So we do need a motion, but just yes, to be clear, they do have, in early voting, you can vote at any voting location, and they have four of them. But on Election Day, you have to vote at one location, and for the citizens of Rome, that would be Boyd. And Boyd is one of the locations for early voting as well.
And if you get confused, which is easy to do, look at the Rome, is it going to be on the Facebook page or the city page?
It's on the, it is on the website right now.
On the website, so look at that.
It's under the city secretary's page under elections.
Okay, do I hear a motion that we accept that?
You have it.
Josh makes a motion to accept it, nice second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, we're moving on to K. Discussion and any necessary action regarding city facilities. And Sam, I think you wanted this put on the agenda. Are you the go-to guy?
Well, no. I think that we have an urgent problem with our facilities, and I didn't see a reason to put it off another couple of weeks. We need to start this discussion, and we need to start, we need to get somewhere and start moving. I encountered, when I talk to our citizens, one of the subjects that always comes up is facilities. Okay, and I heard a suggestion the other day, wasn't at the meeting, right? It is really struck me as a good one. A lot of people want to refurbish the old city hall there on First Street, but yet I also hear people say, we've got to address the issue of our first responders, okay? Because, okay, the first thing we have to do is get our first responders someplace safe to work. And I think of the worst situation is our police department. Well, the suggestion I heard was, can we refurbish the old city hall and move our police department in there? And granted, there's insufficient parking, but they could, you know, come to work, park at the current facility, you know, use that parking lot, but then they could actually use that building, Old City Hall, for their police operations and use, give them someplace. Because right now, that's dried in, we refurbish it, it at least gives them a place to start. I don't know how it compares size-wise to what they currently have. Chief Debus, do you have any thoughts along those lines?
Thank you, Mr. Houston. No, I have not heard that before. We are open to anything. We appreciate what y'all do for us. We're going to continue to provide the highest level of law enforcement service that we possibly can, no matter where we're at. The things I look forward to, as far as a building goes, that may not strike the council or the citizens, is there is a recruiting challenge right now for law enforcement, and a lot of that is in where they want to work because of where they want to work. So that should probably be factored into any long-term discussion. But as far as the old city hall goes, I, I'd love to hear about it.
Oh, I wasn't thinking of that as a permanent home for you. I was thinking of it as a temporary, try to get you someplace that's safe, dry, clean, right? Because again, I'm trying... Because, again, I'm trying to kill two birds with one stone.
Sure.
I hear a lot of people saying they want to refurbish that, that building. Okay, we can address that stone. But then I also, I want to give you and your officers a safe place to work. Well, if we can refurbish that building and then give you a safe place to work, then we can start focusing on, now can we find you a permanent home? Right?
Sure.
I mean, that's what I'm, that's what I'm thinking of. I'm not talking about that as a, as a permanent home, I'm talking about it as, as soon as possible, try to give you a safe home.
Right. Well, we appreciate that, and I look forward to hearing more about it.
I will say the square footage is the same. So the square footage over at the police station is about 2733, I think, and then that is about 2750.
Debus, I was unaware that there was a safety issue over there, is there a safety issue?
I'd be remiss to talk about the compliance of our building.
Okay.
I think that would be left up to experts that.
Okay.
Make those kind of decisions.
I didn't know that there was a safety issue, but. There's, right now, we're, but also, sorry, she lost her train of thought. So I didn't, I was unaware that there was a safety issue, and then also, did you say something about leaking, or what else did you say? You said safety, and what was your other issues, other than moving to the old city hall? You said.
I think the big, the big issues were the foundation that has.
Correct.
Shifed, the electrical, the plumbing, the HVAC system that doesn't keep up in the winter or in the summer.
Okay.
I mean, speaking as a person who, you know, I manage my budget, I'm a mom and a father, manage my budget at home, but I watch what she does to learn from her. You know, I, I hate to see a waste of money, and when you have a heating system that didn't keep up this past winter, two winters in a row, we've had pipes break at the, at the police station because it's not insulated properly, we do have animals in the walls, things like that. There's a lot of different situations that, issues that could be, that can be dealt with. But as far as long-term goes, I, you know, I leave that to you to, I can give you suggestions on what we will need in the, in the long-term future, but how we want to get there would take more than just me standing here saying, hey, this would be a good idea.
Right, we don't want it to be a long-term.
Well, on the safety issue, so I will address that, what has been addressed is from the front part of the building going down that concrete and going to the back part of the building, and it's disjointed, so I think if you're looking for some safety, that's, that would be one of them. You know, again, it's not ADA compliant, there's electrical issues.
Right, but for a temporary, for right now, for temporary, it's not that bad. I mean, the walls aren't caving in, and the ceiling's not falling, so right now, until we can find something, I mean, I understand, I mean, or until we can find something, but right now, I mean, it's.
I don't know, I kind of consider the electrical problems they have to be a fire safety hazard.
Our greatest concern is electrical, because the way that was designed, there's two separate buildings, and they marry those two buildings with a gap this big, this is why we're having issues with the waters, because I'm not that big, and I cannot slide between the wall and fix that, so we had to remove part of the building just to fix the leak, the outside panels. And the rest of it, if it does leak even further, there's not a way we will be able to repair any more of that line without actually pulling walls down. And so, and then electrical is behind, between the two buildings, and that's against electrical code, where you want to be able to get back there. And so there is electrical issues, no one knows how the electrical is ran, because it's done by private systems, and there is concern about the electrical panels, because when the electrician looked at it, he had no word for us. I mean, it is. And so that is, that is a concern, there's concern about ADA, and there's also concern about the transition. We try to make it safe for Chief Love, because he had issues walking between the two buildings because of the way it slopes, and if anybody else has any issues, it is a trip hazard. And to fix it is going to be a great chore. And again, do we put money into something that is not, you know, to that.
Well, I mean, the animals in the walls, the electrical issues, to me, those are all safety hazards, okay? If, if you don't want to call it a safety hazard, you know what, that's fine, not to argue about that. I consider it a safety issue, okay?
I didn't know what you're saying, I was thinking of the difference, safety. Elaine, I mean, if we can start the grants, not putting you on, I'm talking about the grants for old city hall, if we can get that going possibly, then, you know, we could look for something else, and, but.
Sure, so I know that this comes as a big shock.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a list.
All right, go for it. We're here to listen.
So this, this will be our third opportunity to evaluate our facilities. I, I don't think that we need to sit here and say that we have a great need, because that's pretty common knowledge anymore. And so what I did was I made an outline based on what our citizens told us, what we, what I already knew by the past investigations that we've done. Also, I considered categories so that we could somehow make sense of doing comparisons. So I have Roman numerals here, and my first one is the property on First Street, which is the former city hall building. The second one is to possibly, remember, this is not a suggestion, it's just organizing information. Second possibility is to relocate the fire department, police department, the community center, that would be this, and Public Works, and then eventually sell the entire old school site and the police department, that, the existing building today. My third category was repair the current buildings, bring them up to compliance, and then to demolish this school building, and then possibly the, the former kindergarten building. And then, of course, number four is, you know, the crux of everything, which is financial options. So what it did was, as we came to tonight's meeting, I went through and made a list of the things that I thought that we could take immediate action on, begin to work, begin to expand our knowledge base on each of these categories, so that we can do a true comparison on what might be the best plan for us. And so the things that I highlighted, that I think that we can put in motion at this time to get better information would be this. For First Street, engage a grant company. That was my number one thing, we've talked about this, and we know that grants are, were likely eligible for grants in several of these categories. The most difficult of these Roman numerals to get grant money would be to repair our current locations. It would be harder to get money for that, because most grant operators believe that towns take care of their buildings. And so there's not a lot of money out there to bring something up to code. There's money out there to build something new, or to improve the city's situation, especially related to health and safety, and also public safety. And so that would be the most difficult area, I believe, to identify grants. But nonetheless, I think a grant company getting some, whatever we need to do to identify a grant company, to look at all of these options, not just First Street, but particularly First Street because it's, it's historic, it's history as being built in early 1900s as a bank. So that would be one thing that we can do now, that we can get started and help us make some hard decisions. The second thing is, that if we're looking at First Street being used for administration, and now maybe possibly the police department, then we would want some feedback from those departments as to how those buildings might look like. And I'm not saying going and buying an, paying for an architect at this time, I'm saying, how could, how does the staff visualize how those renovations would work? And give us an idea of how that transformation might be. The other thing that I think that we can do right now, at that facility, at that particular building, is to look at the parking challenges. We need input from the fire department, the fire lanes, we need input from Public Works to do with that, that well that we're going to re-energize, or whatever the right word is for that. And, and we, and we need to look at what partnership we might work out with one of the churches for, for some parking, but there's days where the, the church needs its own parking, like for funerals or whatever, and then we need to have an alternative plan on those particular days. So I think those three things are, are action that we can put in motion at this time. On number two, on the, Roman number two, that would be to relocate, and then sell the school property. I think one of the things that we can do at this time is to do some serious negotiations with our, with our developers. What will they consider, what will they do, what part would they play? And ask those hard questions, and see what's the best that they can do for us. They may tell us, we'll give you a discount, you can buy it, you know, I mean, we don't know what they're going to say exactly, and so, but to get a handle on that, so that we can know what difference can or cannot be made by looking at that particular option. And then the last, under Roman numeral two, also, there was some discussion, there was a suggestion to consider the East wastewater plant, there's an additional acreage out there, and I understand that it's pretty rough, as far as the terrain, the elevations and all that kind of stuff. And so if we could get some additional information on what would be needed for that to be a viable building location, you know, how much space would that need, what does it need to be buildable? So I think that that's some things that we can get to work on right now to get that information. Item three, to stay in our current locations and bring them up to compliance, I think we need a priority of action, if we took that avenue, by Public Works. Building facilities fall under their department, that is their job, they've already done some research on that, which building is in the worst shape? Which building is the most unsafe out of that? And to prioritize what that would be, and of course, the best building that we have, you know, and I would look at that in a four category, or five category situation, police department, fire department, community building, Public Works, and then of course, First Street. That, that would be what I, I would suggest. Then number, so we would need a priority of action, and I think we need that from Public Works, I think you've got a lot of information, that's your job, it's your, it's your responsibility to know your buildings well. And then we do have some background information on costs, I think that earlier costs that we had, that we, we looked at the last time, well, on Saturday when we were here, maybe we need to update that because of the, the additional rise of, and availability of what would be needed to make those things happen. And the third item is, what would it cost to demolish the original school and, and also the, the old kindergarten building? And once again, I am not saying do these things, I'm not suggesting that at all. I am looking at, what can we investigate today to help us make the right decisions? And so this is my, my list. I think our financial options are pretty clear, we want to look at grant money, we want to look at what we can do with our upcoming budget, we want to look at all of the financial options in there. But I do think that we also have a responsibility to say, at some point, we may need to do, even if it's a temporary situation, certificate of obligation in order to make some of these happen, especially if we sell all of this property, we would need to transition before we could sell the property. And so we would need an interim loan. So that would be my suggestion, is that those, there were five, six, seven, eight, eight suggestions that I made to begin to take action, to, so we can make better, informed decisions. And I see no reason to delay trying to get this information.
Go ahead. Well, I was just going to ask Cynthia, are we out for offers on grants?
No, we haven't put out that RFP yet. I have talked to Grant Works, just about some upcoming grants, because they're already on-boarded for a couple, you know, project, but no, we have not done that yet.
Are we going to?
Well, yes, it's on my list.
And normally, Elaine, which, not all the time, but a lot of the grants are matching grants, and so we'll have to consider that also.
And that would be an item, as I said, as we look at our budget, our preparation budget, and we look at, you know, all of, all of our needs and all of our things that we need to do, we, we all know how that works, that certainly, I think that in the upcoming budget, that we have to have some discretionary funds to be able to do those matches if we are successful in getting, getting any grants. The other thing about grants, and I've said this many times before, they don't work on the same budget fiscal year that we do. You'll see some of them let in September, you'll see some of them let in January, you'll see some of them let in July. It depends on who you're applying with and what their budget operates around. And so it's not predictable until you make the application.
Thank you, Elaine, for your suggestions, I like them, I think going out for the grants is a great idea. I, that is one of the good ones, I'm not for any bonds, that one, not. No, I know, but I'm just making my suggestion. But I think one of the residents said about selling some of the property, I think that was one good thing that I heard on Saturday, I think that might, you know, we might look into that to help us as well, maybe if we can fix the old school, I mean, First Street, and possibly fix that building, if I've even thought about, if we got that one fixed, move city, the city, city hall employees over there, maybe we can move the police department over into the city hall facility, maybe temporary, maybe until we can find them a building, I've thought about that location. But I mean, there's all the different.
Right.
Options, I'm, you know, asked for the appraisal for this, you know, piece of property.
Yes.
Because it is prime real estate, you know, with a quick trip coming in, so, I mean, there's, I mean, all different aspects, but.
And then to make those most difficult decisions.
Yes, ma'am.
And really make a commitment to what we need to do, the things that I listed are things that we can do right now. And really not at a, at any cost to speak of, other than staff time, I'm sorry, you know, but that, but that's how it works.
Yes.
And because what we can find out on our own helps us stay, you know, we don't want to spend any money we don't have to spend. Some of these things we know, but we need to update. Some of these things we don't know, but we need to know.
Yes.
And so that, these eight things I would ask. And so, uh, that, these eight things I would ask, um, the council to, if we need to take action, I, I would like to suggest that we get started on these things. Uh, we, we have people that are at risk every day. It's gone on for a long time, and we, we, we need to address this.
Trust me, we've had, our fire department did not have smoke detectors in their, in the fire department.
It's amazing.
For a long time, so I was surprised on that one.
It's amazing what we don't have.
So, but when I saw the report, so trust me, I mean, but hey, if that was our city, allowed that to happen, but hey, I mean, but some of their facilities, I think, I mean, they can, there can work until we can figure things out.
Right.
So.
And, and I, and I will say this, and I will try not to get emotional. This city council and the one, the two or three previous to this, I've been on the council for four, going on five years here. And I've said this many times before, this is not the fault of any of those city councils. This has been ongoing, unfortunately, for decades. It's not about blame. We need to get way past blame, and we know what we need to do. I don't wanna be ne- be known for being on the city council that knew these needs needed to be addressed and did not do it. I don't, that's the legacy I don't want to have.
No, but you're making a difference in looking into the grant, so you are, so.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying.
So, don't worry, you're gonna make a change. So, don't get emotional. So, you're gonna make a change. You already made the Roman numerals, so you're gonna make a change. Thank you, Elaine, for all of your hard work. So, thank you.
Are you making a motion tonight?
I'm asking, do we need to do that?
I think we still have a little further to go. Um, I know that there's a lot of people that wanna sell the old school. Um, one of the things that I don't think we're really considering is sell the old school. We no longer have a place for Public Works or a fire department. So, it's a, uh, I mean, that's part of the building. I mean, that's part of the, that's part of the facility is, that's the, excuse me, that's the old gymnasium over there, right? Um, I don't know what Public Works was back when the school was a school, okay? But, um.
I think we're talking about selling it now. I think it's way further down the road, so don't even worry about it, Sam, right now. It's way far down the road, if possible.
As we look at options, that was one of the things that Elaine suggested. We need to consider all of our options, okay? Um, we have a very limited amount of real estate. Now, I believe what you were referencing was the ten acres out, uh, off Hickory that we have. Right now, it's.
There's ten acres off the corner of Hickory. It used to be close to the east side.
Right, right, right.
More or less, it's been switched and moved up.
Yes.
To that condo.
But I mean, everything's in play. I, I recognize that. Um, I also think in terms of, I hate, I hate spending money that you're not gonna really have a long-term gain, okay? Like, I hate renting, okay? Always hated renting. Um, but one of the things that I, I think we need to consider is we have potentially temporary buildings that we can use, okay? You can, you can rent, you know, they're, they're temporary buildings, that you can bring them in, you can rent them for a year or two. Um, I believe if you end up renting them for four years, it becomes cheaper to buy, okay? Um, I don't know how Chief Debus would feel about, uh, moving the police department into a bunch of temporary buildings, but, um, when you talk about what the needs are, right? My, my career as a software engineer is that when I solve problems, the first thing I do is I come up with requirements. And you have to specify, what do we have to have? Don't try to design it before you know what you're gonna do, okay? You have to identify the requirements before you start trying to design something. So, before we ask Chief Debus to say, what do you wanna do with the old school, with, uh, if we were to move you into the, uh, building on First Street, or before we ask Cynthia, what would you do if we put you over there? I think the first thing we need to ask them is, what do you need out of a police department? And we need to be able to say that we need to project how far into the future we're looking at, okay? Cause we don't wanna put them in someplace that's too small, too big, okay? Um, we have growth that's coming, okay? So I think the first thing to ask of all of our department heads, right, is what's your projected growth? What are the needs that you have for your building, okay? Not, don't go design how you want it to look, right? Don't make me a floor plan, okay? Make me a list of what the items are that you have to have. I need so many offices, I need so many bathrooms, I need so many gun cabinets, whatever, okay? I don't know what the police department needs, right? I need a big cell, okay? Um, place to keep police dogs, uh, whatever, okay? Um, but I think we need to keep our options open because when we start looking at, there's a, there's a swap thing that we're gonna be doing because of our limited facilities. It's like, okay, do this, move these people here, move that there, and you're gonna end up being swapping things, and you need to have a plan for how we're gonna do that swapping.
I think that's where we want, when we want to build a larger facility, so that's what you're talk, we're talking about, doing a swap. So, if we move, what, I think, not doing a swap, what, are you talking about where I was saying, move them into the old City Hall?
I'm not talking about any, any specific this department here or that department there. I'm saying, we need to investigate all our options. Elaine just, uh, listed a lot of options. She didn't say, here's a plan, let's go follow it. She listed options, okay? As we're, as we're thinking of options, we need to think in terms of, we need to find safe places for our first responders, okay? To me, those are your higher priority, early on the list, things we've gotta do. And when we're talking about having to move people and put them in some type of temporary facility, right? I know I had suggested the police could go to the building on First Street. Well, if we can find something that meets the police department's needs out of a temporary building, that could be something far quicker. Now, I hate renting those. I hate the idea of renting those. But the thing is, that could end up becoming a long-term, you know, if we have it for four years or something. It could end up being something that Public Works could use for storing equipment, right? For part of their expansion, you know, and, and buying those, so it's not a wasted, wasted cost. But I like your ideas. We need to start off with, what are our requirements for each of our facilities? We need to get the Grant Works, um, you know, some company that we could work with for getting grants, um.
I do think that, I do think that we do have some of that information already on hand because when we asked the architectural engineer folks to come up with the architectural drawings for the school, we had to know all of those things in, in order for those drawings to be made. So I think that we, we do have a good basis for that to start with. What we might do is share those drawings with Chief Debus and let him look at it and see, and, and not to say use that plan, I'm just saying, if you want a list of what he thinks would be good for his, his department, as far as space, number of offices, that kind of thing, then that might be a, a place to start. And all that you've said is true, I do believe that's true. If we get it, if we choose one of these where we need transitional building so that we can go ahead and sell a bigger property or, or several properties, whatever the case may be that we decide to do, that is one of those temporary, um, interim possibilities. So, I, for, for me tonight, I'm just after, let's, let's, let's start getting some things done, and are these some things that we can do and, and it really not costs us anything? But to ask Public Works, which I'd already had on the list, to prioritize those buildings was, was why that was on the list.
Thank you, Elaine, for everything. I think Michelle has something to say.
I just, can a member of the public speak as a fire inspector on this? Concerning this, the buildings?
Do we have a fire inspector here?
Not, I was Joe one, hey, you keep quiet on all your talents, you know?
One of my professional licenses is a fire inspector through the Texas Commission of Fire Protection. In a normal city, Chief Debus would not be allowed to walk back into that building he's in right now. Neither will Fitch here. Those are life safety issues, when y'all were talking about life safety issues. The panel box, no smoke detectors, even this fire exit right here was shut down business. So, those are the priorities. Every day that the city knew about them and acknowledged them, the city is carrying liability. Fire happens inside that building while they're in there, and somebody gets killed, the city's responsible for that. So, that's the priority. We keep talking about grants and things like that. These are life safety issues that should have been handled years and years ago. So, if you really care about your first responders, you shouldn't let them back in the buildings.
Thanks, Joe. One thing we also got to address about, say, east side wastewater, if there is enough for the ten acres, we got the railroad track. We don't really wanna put first responders, I don't think, east of the railroad track right now, since we only have one way in and one way out.
Is the only one we can do for that.
One thing I would say that, um, li- listening to some of the things, you know, that the citizens have said and that you all have said, um, and just to make sure we're clear. So, we had, our, I mean, staff has already been looking, for instance, at, at the east wastewater treatment plant location and what that would take to, um, basically, we're gonna need a lot of field dirt, but, you know, to get a place, um, for a, a building over there that would have, have sufficient space for Public Works. Um, you know, we are gonna be looking at, doing the RFP for Grant. Uh, we have been talking with the developer. I would remind you too, that you guys have, um, it was very high level, um, so I do like your idea of having each department head, um, going back to the drawing board and talking about their future growth, but, um, Councilmember Priest, you had asked for that, um, last year, um, before the second bond, and so, um, in one of the presentations that is online, um, we did talk at high level about some of those needs, so we can put more into the paper and identify those for you. I did express on Saturday, staff, I, I think there is, um, a priority list that staff can provide you with, just based on the condition of the facilities that we have. And so, you know, we can start there. I mean, that, um, it, it's gonna take a little bit, um, and I think, uh, one thing I would say, um, and I know this is a difficult ask, but I think we just need to be cognizant of it, um, when staff, um, move, so, and I was not here when all of this occurred, but when, you know, for instance, when City Hall moved from, um, the old City Hall, and then they came here, and I understand they were like back in the fire for a while, but then they were here for a while, and then they went over to where we are now. That's a lot of movement in a short amount of time that takes time and resources away from daily operations as well, so, and that's just one department, so that would obviously apply to other departments. So, um, you know, really looking at, going back and looking at the costs that we had done, um, part of it will be, um, you know, we can do that. The industry standard that we use, uh, has gone up, um, but it's also what we applied was a, you know, a total remodel for, you know, bringing them up to code and a, and a remodel. So, I think we can, um, we have some of those figures, and, and I know that that was a conversation that we had. I mean, we don't have confidence in those numbers, um, and I just, I'm not sure how to answer that because in the current economic conditions that we're facing, it's only getting worse. But I do think that there's tangible things that we can begin, and staff can go tighten up some of the things that we've been working on that have been, um, in response to the things we've heard you all say and the citizens say, and, and bring that back, and then start looking at priorities, and then, Councilmember Easton's point, trying to really get a hold of what that need is in the short term and the long term, and see if we can't get a game plan that makes sense.
So, Ms. Priest and Mr. Easton, y'all both had great points. We do have a starter kit, basically, with that, uh, architect, uh, that we had over there, but at that time, we were trying to fit all the departments into what we had at the time. And I think if we're going to look at what, uh, who we're gonna put where, um, it may not be beneficial to do temporary because, say, we use old City Hall and renovate it temporarily for the police department, they've gotta have specific kind of security, weapons storage, evidence locker, et cetera. So if you move them out of there in two years, and then maybe you have Public Works or somebody in, we've done wasted all that money on all that stuff that Public Works isn't gonna be used, so we gotta go spend it again in another building for the police department. So I think the idea of asking the department heads, okay, without a building in mind, what exactly do you need to operate? What storage, desk space, head counts, that kinda thing? And then we can work around that and figure out then, what building makes sense that we already have, or do we need to build a new building or rent a new building to be able to make it work for that? So, I think, um, it sounds like Cynthia, you're already, we're on the works for the, uh, Grant Works, right? Or working for the Grant stuff? So you need, you need a.
I, I think the, with Grant Works, but the quorum for the architect, I do not suggest we use.
We're not even at the point.
Right, but on that one, I just, but I make it, I just wanna put that out there, not to use them. If we've had two failed bonds, and it's, I do not suggest ever using them again, but I know Elaine, it's using, not ever moving the police. If we move the old City Hall in, and not moving, um, the police in there, it's gonna be offices. So hopefully by that point, uh, City Hall and the police and everything would be moving into a larger facility, and we could, yes, so we wouldn't have to move the police or anybody else in there. Then we could rent that old ci- uh, the old City Hall out, or, as I know you want, is a chamber of commerce, maybe at that point, move something in there to benefit the city, or if it is something that the city can utilize, or we could rent that building out, or sell it as an office space to benefit our, oh, downtown. That is, uh, you know. But that one, we are way too far ahead, but so, but there it is, so.
As, as I was saying, I know you were already looking into the, uh, talking to Grant Works, so I think to take action tonight, I think what we need is, one, is a motion to work on the RFP, right? Or to, to find a grant? Or you've already got that?
You've already given, yeah.
Okay, so then, the rest of it, I think, is just giving direction to the staff to come back with their recommendations on what they need. And then once we have all that information, I think then we can move further from there on deciding what to do next.
Okay, Josh, what are you looking at? Five years out, 10 years out?
I think right now, what we just need is, what does the police department need to operate safely?
Right now.
What do you, what do you need, storage-wise, head count-wise, whatever? And then come back with that information, maybe five to 10-year plan, and then bring us back that information, and then we can go from there on buildings.
So you're saying five or 10 years, which one, pick one?
I think, uh, if I may modify that a little bit, Josh, I think the urgency for the police department is, we need to find something to get them into, but then when we start looking at how we design it, it has to be something that's extensible, okay? We, we have to know that, okay, this building, or wherever we put them, or whatever we're gonna do, it has to have room to grow, okay? So that, but right now, I think, we need to just find someplace for them, okay? The, the short term, find someplace for them right now. The short-term, find someplace for them right now.
Well, I think that would come after they give us what they need, because once they give us what they need...
Absolutely.
Right, then we can talk about where to put them, but we need to know what everybody needs to be able to operate on a daily basis right now. So I think if council's in agreement, we can just give that direction to the staff to bring that back, and then we can kind of go from there, since she's already got the RFP.
Yep, you may, you're, let's go.
We're already...
Cynthia, do you have any, does this feel clear to you?
All right. Yes, it's clear.
Sean, you're good. We don't need any kind of motion. Cynthia's got more action to take.
Well, I mean, I think it's clear what you're looking for, and I, and staff is, most of the staff is here, we can hear you.
So we don't need a motion on anything, do we? I think we know what, where we're coming from. Anybody else before we adjourn? And do we have any items for our next meeting?
I would like to put something on agenda. I would like Morris Street and Morris and Main, the road repair.
Motion to adjourn.
Well, just one minute. Kristy, were you wanting to say something? No. Huh? Okay, then we are, may have a motion in a second to adjourn. Anybody against it? Okay, anybody for it? Let's go.